Conference will now be recorded.
Good evening and welcome to the October 1st, 2025 South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners meeting. I will call this meeting to order. All Commissioners are present this evening. At this time, I would ask you to all join me, rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'd like to announce that all public sessions of the South Whitehall Township Board of Commissioners are electronically recorded, filed, and posted to the township website for public access. At this time, I will ask our Township Manager, Tom Petrucci, to review our public virtual meeting rules.
Thank you. The public virtual meeting rules are as follows. Courtesy of the floor for non-agenda items will be at the beginning and end of the agenda. Public comment will be limited to five minutes per speaker. For all listed agenda items, the Board President will call for courtesy of the floor prior to the Board of Commissioners taking action on that specific agenda item. For in-person attendees, please raise your hand to be recognized, then move to the podium when directed. You will be asked to state your name and address for the record, and may then proceed with asking your question. For those participating virtually, please mute your microphone or telephone to avoid any background noise that may cause interference during the meeting. The chat box feature will be active throughout the meeting. If you have a comment or question, please type your full name and address into the chat box. The staff member monitoring go-to meeting will then unmute your microphone, and you will have the opportunity to comment or ask a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I'd also like to announce the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on September 24th and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss legal and personnel matters. Agenda item four is courtesy of the floor, opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board on any non-agenda items. Is there anyone present this evening who'd like to address the Board? Is there anyone online with a public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Agenda item five is presentations. We have our August 2025 Financial Review Year-to-Date Report, and Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So as we trend towards the end of the fiscal year, we are hitting our numbers overall as projected. So for the general fund, percentage of budget for revenue received, eighty-two point nine two percent. Expense is at forty-nine point eight six percent. Fire tax fund, which is of course companion to the real estate taxes coming in to the township, is eighty-six point three one percent of the budget for revenue. Expense thirty-seven point two five percent. Water fund, twenty-four point six five percent of the revenue, expense twenty point four three percent. The reason due to the water fund is a large customer did not come on as intended this year, and we've adjusted accordingly. Sewer fund, percentage of the budget, sixty-two point six eight percent of the revenue received, expense forty-three point zero two percent. And refuse recycling, seventy-six point eight nine percent for revenue, expense seventy point nine two percent. Capital fund, thirty point two eight percent of the budget, expense forty-seven point two seven percent. We are trending to complete all of our capital projects this year. State Highway Aid Fund received for liquid fuels revenue earlier this year, one hundred and one point eight percent of budget, and then expense eighty point five seven percent. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions from the Board?
No, I was just concerned about the water because halfway through the year, we should have been farther along, but you explained it. So thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to thank the finance team for preparing the monthly update. It keeps the Board and our residents informed on the status of our budget and our township finances. So thank you. Moving on to agenda item six, meeting minutes from the September 17th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any comments or corrections from the Board? If not, I need a motion to approve. Second, motion is second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item seven A, we have an ordinance of South Whitehall Township, Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, amending Part II General Legislation, Chapter 350 zoning of the codified ordinances to add data center as a new use to Section 350 dash forty-eight D two. Add Section 350 dash thirty-three to create a planned innovation research and technology PERT overlay district and establishing regulations for the PERT district. Add Attachment Four Appendix D PERT Design Guidelines, amending the zoning map to identify the boundary of the PERT overlay district and provide for a repealer, failure to enforce, not a waiver, severability, and effective date. And the purpose of this agenda item this evening is for a project update. I'll ask our Director of Community Development, Dave Manhart, to please present.
Thank you. So we wanted to give an update on the public notice. So the public hearing for next meeting, October 15th, has been advertised. We added a website with a Project Hub page that the public notices have directed people to go to to answer questions. We've advertised in the Parkland Press. There was a table set up at the community development booth at the festival this weekend. Signs have been posted. I'm sure you've seen some of them. Some of them are quite large. Additionally, we've mailed certified letters to all the property owners, and then anyone within, or any, I guess the best way to describe it is any neighborhood or property within a thousand feet of the industrial zone received a postcard. We encourage any public with questions to reach out to myself or Chris Stroller. Answer questions. We're happy to answer questions. More information we can get out on the ordinance that I think the better off will be.
Dave, thank you for going over and above with your notification to residents. I did notice the larger signs. That's something that I've heard feedback over time. The smaller signs were difficult for residents to see, and I appreciate the effort of the township to improve that.
So we have, we have a sign that's not quite as big for some of the other public notices. We have some sandwich boards that we're going to start rolling out for future public notices.
Very good. Thank you. Does the Board have any comments or questions on this update? Any public comment? Anyone online with a public comment? Hearing and seeing none. We have no motion needed, as this was just an update. Moving on to agenda item AA, resolutions. We have a resolution extending the conditional preliminary final approval granted to a major plan entitled Aesthetic Surgery Associates Medical Office Building, and Dave, if you'd please present.
So this is a project located at sixteen nineteen Housman Road. The plan proposes constructing a two-story medical office building, parking lot on the, and parking lot on the roughly two and a half acre parcel. The property served by Public Water and Sewer. It's zoned highway commercial. This was approved in May 2024. They received a six-month extension April 16th, 2025. They're back asking for another six-month extension. Applicants here to just to give an update. One thing we've kind of been kicking around as staff is whether we should just start doing one-year extensions and just kind of be done with it. But something to consider whether for this one or future ones.
Very good, Dave. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Good evening. If you turn the microphone on, there'll be a little green light when you press the button.
Hello. Here we go. Kate Kersio from Fitzpatrick, Luntz and Bubba, here on behalf of the applicant tonight to answer any questions the Board might have about our request or the status.
Open up to the Board for any comments or questions.
I just had one question, and it's along the lines of what Dave was saying. It's a question I ask in all of these, is six months going to be enough to save your time, your client's time, and the Board's time?
Absolutely. No, I think that the developer was looking to take advantage of a slightly less constrained lending environment. So we're at the one-yard line on this one. I believe I can represent to the Board that all of the developers' agreements are in final form as well. We're just waiting to put in the financial security specific provisions. So I think it'll be more than enough.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the Board? Any public?
So there's seventeen conditions, and you're just asking for an extension on just one condition, which is condition number seventeen?
I don't have the approval.
Yeah, so that condition is the condition that requires it to be recorded within twelve months. So it's, you're extending all of the conditions. That condition seventeen gets extended another six months.
And I think the applicant stated you're pretty close to
We're very close.
moving forward and having the plan recorded, which is what we're talking about tonight. Have further questions? Commissioner Paichel? There's no other questions from the Board. Is there any public comment? Anyone online with a comment? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. A second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Very good. Thank you for being here. Then to item eight B, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the settlement stipulation in the matter of Gloria R. Ziegler, AKA Gloria Summer Ziegler, and Thirty-seven Twelve Sri LLC versus County of Lehigh Board of Assessment Appeals, docket number two oh two four C three nine one three. If you'd please present.
Thank you. So this assessment appeal stipulation is for the property located at three seven one two Hamilton Boulevard. The property owner is as identified by Board President Diane Kelly. The Lehigh County Board of Assessment Appeals assessed the combined value of the property at seven million five hundred ninety-one thousand one hundred dollars for the 2025 tax year. The property owners filed a tax assessment appeal contesting this valuation for 2025 and subsequent years made part of the appeal. So South Whitehall Township has entered its appearance on these appeals through the Township Solicitor Attorney Zader. And after discussions amongst the parties, the parties agreed to settle the appeal. So the key terms of the settlement are listed as follows. The new assessed value effective January 1st, 2025 would be five million three hundred and twenty thousand. This reflects a fair market value of ten million dollars after application of the fifty-three point two percent common level ratio. As a result of this new assessment, going back to January 1st, we, the refund amount would be seven thousand three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents combined, general tax is, and real estate tax for fire. So this resolution effectively authorizes the Township Solicitor to execute the agreement and then the stipulation. And then township staff would take this necessary steps to refund.
Very good. Thank you, Tom. Does the Board have any comments or questions on this resolution?
So that's property right off the rail line, correct? Off the ramp? Okay. It's commercial, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, this is the hotel across from Dorney Park.
Point, sorry.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions from the Board? Any public comment? Any online comment? Do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item eight C, we have a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Township of South Whitehall, Lehigh County, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, approving the settlement stipulation in the matter of fifteen fifty Pond Road LP versus County of Lehigh Board of Assessment Appeals, docket number two oh two four dash C dash four zero two zero. Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So this property is located at one five five zero Pond Road. Property owner is one five five zero Pond Road LP. So they currently had an assessment of ten million nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand two hundred dollars for the 2025 tax year. So they also filed an appeal. The township is, has entered their appearance. So the key terms of the settlement are as follows, effective January 1st, 2025. The property's total combined assessed value will be reduced to ten million one hundred and eight thousand. So that reflects a fair market value of nineteen million after the application of the fifty-three point two percent common level ratio. So no refunds are required to be paid as a stipulation. So, but the fiscal impact going forward is two thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents in total going forward based on the current millet rate. And again, this resolution would effectively mark the stipulation settled, discontinued and ended, and we would, we would put it into effect.
Thank you, Tom. The Board comments or questions?
Tom, that's a reduction in next year's tax revenue by that amount?
Technically, yes. And then this year's as well. We just don't have, there's no refund due and payable at this point.
Any other comments? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution? I'll make that motion. Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item eight D, we have a resolution extending a conditional offer of employment for entry-level position of police officer in the Township's Police Department to applicants number four seven four seven one, two eight six six nine, and three five seven three three, conditioned on the individual's satisfactorily completing the medical and psychological examination to confirm their fitness for duty. Chief Lombardo, if you'd please present.
Evening Commissioners. So on August 16th, 2025, the Police Department conducted civil service testing for entry-level police officer through the Lehigh County Consortium of Police Chiefs. The physical fitness and written portions were completed right here at Parkland High School. Following the physical fitness and written exam testing, in accordance with civil service rules, oral interviews were conducted with the top twenty-five candidates. Following the interviews, an eligibility list of twelve candidates was compiled, and that was approved by civil service. So the top three candidates we've compiled have passed polygraph and background checks, thereby ensuring the township doesn't have to proceed with candidates that haven't passed these key integrity and qualification checks. So the Police Department is respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners extend the conditional offer of employment for entry-level police officer in the South Whitehall Township Police Department to applicants four seven four seven one, two eight six six nine, and three five seven three three, conditioned upon successful completion of medical and psychological testing. And this will be three of the four openings we currently have.
Fantastic. Thank you, Chief. I certainly support the approval of these conditional offers for prospective officers, and as they remain contingent on medical and psychological exams, the Board extends our best wishes to the applicants as they proceed through the process. And I thank you and the recruitment team for the work that I know that you've all done. We've not seen this successful presentation to the Board of new officers. So the work that you've all done has been significant, and I thank you.
Yeah, like we, like everything else I've done since I've been here, I kind of, you know, set them in motion, and they, they make it their own, and they did an excellent job, all of them, you know, from top to bottom. And I couldn't be more proud of all of them.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll open up to the Board if there's comments or questions. Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said resolution?
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item nine A, we have a motion to extend the Patriot Workwear Uniform contract for one year, beginning November 7, 2025, thereby securing the original pricing for an additional year. And Chief, if you'd please present.
So in November 2024, the township entered in a contract with Patriot Workwear LLC to provide South Whitehall Township Police Department with tailored uniforms. With the rising prices of materials and textiles, we feel the extension will be in the best interest of the township as the vendor has agreed to, agreed to hold this same pricing for another year. The contract was previously awarded in subsequent years to Patriot with the Police Department being satisfied with the service and uniform items provided, and feel an extension of the contract will provide the same. And although the previously approved switch to the work or duty uniform in a previous meeting, we're going to maintain this Patriot contact, contract for Class One or dress uniforms, which I'm wearing right now. So whereas previously, we would have bought officers four of these, that'll be one for dress and the three that, that we, you approved in a previous meeting. And that includes fitted shirts, pants, and a dress hat. And even new hires will be provided one of these uniforms for the future. So we want to maintain the same pricing and contract for that reason.
Certainly makes sense. Thank you. Chief, does the Board have any comments or questions?
Is, this is part of your uniform upgrades, changes you brought us, brought to us?
No, this is just to maintain the contract for this, what I'm wearing right now, which we are going to convert into our Class One or Class A uniform, which will be for like meetings, parades, funerals, things like that, their dress uniform. What I presented and you've approved in the past will be their daily work uniform with the outer carrier, which is a significant savings overall. So it'll be three of those and one of these, still overall a considerable savings per officer that we hire new and moving forward.
They will have the new patches?
Yes, we're going to convert them as, as we get them in. I got the first one today.
Nice. Any other comments? Any public comment? I just, I will make a comment. I did see the new uniforms at the event on Saturday night, and they look very professional. Again, thank you to the team and you for the work in identifying those, the need for them, as well as the new uniform and the budget saving. It's a win all the way around. The officers seem very happy.
Yeah, they're very excited to get going with that, and they did, put a lot, a lot of work into that. And I just kind of set them up, and they ran with it and did a really good job. So they'll all benefit from their own work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Second. Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Chief. Then item nine B, we have a motion to award contract to Victory Gardens Incorporated for the Broadway, sorry, Brickyard Road Demolition Project. I'll ask Director of Operations Herb Bender to please present.
Thank you. On Tuesday, September 23rd, four bidder, four bids were received and opened for the Brickyard Demo Project. This, this bid was publicly advertised once in a local publication as required by law. Additionally, nine potential bidders attended the pre-bid meeting and site visit. Additionally, forty-seven potential bidders viewed and downloaded the bid documents from the PennBid site. The bid was approved for advertisement by the Board of Commissioners at the September 3rd, 2025 meeting. We're respectfully requesting a motion to award the contract to Victory Gardens, Inc., for the Brickyard Road Demo Project. After conducting thorough reference checks, this company has been highly recommended for their exceptional work. The bid for the demo of two houses came in at twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. This was budgeted in the 2025 capital budget for sixty-five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars. So it came in significantly under budget.
Fantastic. Herb, thank you. And thank you for, to you and the team, that a portion of this project will be taken care of by our Public Works team. The Board's grateful for your dedication and stewardship of taxpayer dollars when possible. So thank you. Does the Board have any comments or questions on this agenda?
I had a quick question for you, Herb. Do you have any type of insight on the bid discrepancy? Because, you know, twenty-three five, which is really good, and the highest one was fifty-five. It's the same scope of work. Is there, you know?
Just what they feel they could do the job for. They, every bidder has to meet the exact expectations of the bid spec. So they just thought it was worth this much. This one thought it was worth that much. So.
Thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Any public comment?
Hearing and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
No. Second.
Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Herb. Agenda item nine C, we have a motion to enter into a three-year copier-printer lease agreement with Frasier Advanced Information Systems. And Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So this lease agreement would be for the admin copier scanning device that we have. So the main one for the township. So we did seek another quote. So this, this was the lowest price as set forth in the, in the bid tabulation. And by bid tabulation, really, the bidding has already been, been conducted by the Commonwealth through the Co-Stars program. We actually go above and beyond and still seek additional quotes to ensure that we're operating within the confines of our budget. So this is in compliance with the purchasing policy, and we've utilized Frasier for a number of years. So the action requested is a motion to approve the lease with Frasier Advanced Information Systems for the term of thirty-six months at four hundred and fifty dollars, four hundred and fifteen dollars per month. So Frasier will only hold the pricing until October 15th due to tariffs. So this is the same price that we currently pay. So this is, it's an expeditious request.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Tom. And thank you to Donna Zacharo-Lagonia for preparing the bid tabulation for our review as well. Board have any comments or questions? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda item nine D, we have a motion to approve the recommended distribution of the state aid allocation received on Wednesday, September 24th, 2025, in the amount of nine hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents per email notification from Pennsylvania Department of the Auditor General. Tom, if you'd please present.
Thank you. So the township did confirm, we received the nine hundred fifty-nine thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars and thirty-three cents, which represents the state aid for our pension plans. So we have thirty days from the receipt of the state aid to deposit the amount into the custodian bank for the township's pension plans. So the allocation of the state aid to each of the respective pension plans of the township should be based on the distribution formula derived from the 2025 AG385 report that was filed with the Auditor General earlier this year. So the number of units for each plan can serve as the basis for distributing the state aid to each plan, and that's recommended by the Auditor General. And to clarify, it's because the amount of the state aid received by the township is based on the number of units generated by the plan participants. So a unit is defined as an employee that was on the payroll for at least six months for the preceding year that the AG385 was filed. So for Act 600 to find bench benefit, police pension plans, each eligible employee counts as two units. So for non-uniform plans, each employee accounts as one unit. So it's recommended to distribute the state aid based on the actual number of units reported by each respective plan in order to ensure a consistent approach now and in the future. So included in the memorandum was the graph which allocates the state aid and then also shows the amount of the general fund allocation for each plan. So indulge me as I go through this. So the number of units for the police defined benefit pension plan was eighty-two. The state aid allocation to the plan is five hundred and forty-six thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and change. So the 2025 approved MMO was one million three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars and nine dollars. So the general fund allocation to the plan is seven hundred ninety thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifteen cents. The office defined benefit plan, the state aid allocation is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and change, plus additional monies allocated from the defined contribution plan, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and change. So one hundred and nine thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and change total. And then plus thirteen thousand, another additional money that we have to account for under the forfeiture distribution that we had due to employees leaving. That's one hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and change. So for that plan, the MMO, the minimum municipal obligation was seven hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-one dollars. The general fund allocation is six hundred and thirty-seven thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventeen cents. The Public Works defined benefit plan, there's nine units. The state aid allocation is fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars and change, and the MMO was seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. General fund allocation to the plan is seven hundred and nineteen thousand one eighty-five ninety-eight dollars, ninety-eight cents. Defined contribution plan, so that's the plan that, that is essentially six percent of an employee's salary. That's, that's the current plan that all non-uniform employees that are on, unless they had a grandfathering provision when they were before the hire date. So that is, the state aid allocation is three hundred and thirteen thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-four cents, because there's forty-seven units, minus the sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and change that, that was allocated to the office defined benefit plan, minus the thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-seven cents for the forfeiture distribution in 2025. So that gets us to two hundred and twenty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. MMO is two hundred and forty-three thousand three hundred and twelve dollars, and general fund allocation is thirteen thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars and thirty-seven cents. Now, on this plan, I want to highlight the fact that we don't fully fund it till the beginning of '26, after all of the salaries have been accounted for at the end of '25. So we're proactively paying the full amount based on current employee projections, and then we'll see where we end up once we do that reconciliation. So overall, the fiscal summary was that we are within our budget, which was set aside for the 2025 budget, and we're actually slightly, slightly ahead of the game because of the fact that the state aid was budgeted. because of the fact that the state aid was budgeted just slightly less. The projection was more from the state. So we are in good shape to meet our requirements to the state within budget and on time. And so this motion would authorize that action.
Very good, Tom. Thank you for preparing all this information for the board, and it's very good news. Thank you. Does the board have any comments or questions on this motion? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve said motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Agenda Item 10, Correspondence and Information, Boards and Commissions. Tom, if you would update us on our upcoming meetings and events?
Yes, so upcoming meetings with details posted on the township website. This Monday, we have October 6, 7 p.m., Public Safety Commission. Wednesday, October 8, 10 a.m., Civil Service Commission. Wednesday, October 8, 5 p.m., we have a special meeting of the board to interview vacancies for advisory and, and citizen boards. So Thursday, October 9, 7 p.m., is a planning commission meeting. Tuesday, October 14, 6 p.m., is a crime watch meeting. And Wednesday, October 15, 7 p.m., is a Board of Commissioners meeting. We also have Trunker Retreat Night, October 17th. That's on the township website.
Excellent, thank you, Tom. We have no direction and discussion, but I do want to take a moment to extend my sincere thanks on behalf of the board to Herb and our Public Works team, to our police department, our volunteer fire companies, Parks and Rec team, as well as the advisory board, Chris Stroller and his team, the environmental advisory committee members, our emergency management team, for their outstanding efforts in planning a very successful community day on Saturday. I know Herb was there at 9 a.m., I heard, for a 4 o'clock event. Thank you for your diligence. Collectively, your commitment to create a safe and welcoming, enjoyable event did not go unnoticed. It was a wonderful day for residents of all ages to come together and truly reflected the spirit of the community that we value so deeply. I want to also thank our community partners for joining to make that event a success. And thank you all for your hard work and dedication. Greatly appreciate it.
Did I, is this, can I? Isn't there a coffee with cops at the Target? Was that today, or is that?
It was today.
Yes, sir.
How'd that go?
It was good. A lot of officers and, of course, right in the entrance there. So a lot of people came. It was good. And the dog from Lehigh Valley Hospital joined us too. So there was probably 12 to 15 of us, and people just cycled through over time.
Did we, speaking of dogs, did you pick a dog, or did?
Not yet. We'll be doing that when it gets closer to the time to purchase in March.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Yes, thank you, Chief, for planning that event. I know our community enjoys opportunity to interact with our police department, and the Target is such a great place to do that.
It's a good spot, and I even said to them, we want to move it around the town so we reach out to more people, so that, it'll be well-received.
Excellent, thank you. Agenda Item 12, courtesy of the floor, again, opportunity for any member of the public to approach the board on any non-agenda item. Any member with a comment this evening? Anyone online? Hearing and seeing none. Before I call for the motion on invoices, I was going over my agenda packet, and I, I want to recognize our finance team who present to the board in our packet all of the invoices and disbursements that we are approving tonight. This has not always been the case or the procedure in this township. In my first few years as a board member, I did not have access to that information. I was only given a list of the names of the payments made. And I believe firmly that the inclusion of the invoices provides our board with a full detail of how your tax dollars are spent. And I am very grateful for the transparency that our staff even provides to this board, so thank you. I do need a motion to authorize payment of the very invoices I discussed. If I could please have that?
So moved.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We have no exact session to schedule. I need a motion to adjourn. I'll make that motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening.